For your largest account, which is your Blue Cross Blue Shield. I served account, you know, there's been numerous issues and concerns over a year. And I just don't understand it. I would appreciate that explanation. And I'm looking to get reinstated. And I don't understand how someone can come in, bring someone else in again. After we had a renewal, I have the copies here of what I did so that you can review. And I just don't understand how this, this professional man here did anything but be professional and how he handled it. I don't understand. And you're a holy shit. So I don't even know what's going on. So I don't understand what I did or how I did it, but I appreciate the courtesy of an explanation and want to return back to my present position. May I give this information to you later?
Yes, sir. Thank you for having me. This is Dave Savie. And understand that this is for, you can still sign in because this is for a special meeting.
Well, I didn't see a copy of the budget, so I don't know if you have. Since I don't have a copy of the budget, I don't know if you have my questions at the budget time because I can't respond when I have a copy of the budget.
Ms. Taylor, do you want to sign in for? Ms. Taylor, looking for the sign in sheet here. Is there another one for the next meeting?
No, we're just, we're.
Okay. Action items. Bills payable, paid and payable. Attorney's approval. There's a listing of the critical general operating expenses for the village in University Park that occurred on October twenty-fourth, twenty-seventeen through November fourteenth, twenty-seventeen. General fund account, two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars and seven cents. Road and bridge fund, seven thousand, eighty dollars and seventy-eight cents. Capital projects, thirty-six thousand, nine-hundred-six dollars. And payroll fund, three thousand, six-hundred-seven dollars and forty-one cents. In total of two-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars and twenty-six cents. Their most. So moved by trustee Brooks. Second by trustee McMullin. Questions, concerns, comments?
Questions.
Yes, sir?
Uh, yes, I had two. First, uh, which, uh, union contractors, uh, Hodge, Hodges, Lawson, and Muse Hyder negotiated? And the second question is, what's the settlement payment for, for?
I'm sorry, for? Who's the settlement?
Kennedy, there's a settlement payment for ten thousand dollars. What settlement is that for? And, uh, uh, which, uh, labor contractor was Hodges in it, that tale negotiated?
Okay, ten thousand dollars is for the settlement that the board approved two board meetings ago, uh, in regards to a young man, uh, that filed a lawsuit against the police department.
Aye.
Okay. And the second answer is, uh, that payment you see for attorney is a payment plan that the village has been paying for attorney that we owe several hundred thousand dollars to, that we're currently paying back from years ago. No, I'm talking about the other Hodges.
Uh, that's an attorney.
The Hodges women are, that was the, uh, that was the union contract, right? They just owe them.
Labor, labor.
Labor, yeah, labor attorney. And, uh, the other one is for settlements that we just talked about two years ago.
That's correct.
Okay. Um, where are we finished? I know we have not, because it was a million dollars. Uh, Stuart.
Stuart Don.
Stuart Don, have we finished on that?
No.
We're still paying him?
Yes.
Okay. Where are we with that? Is that, um?
When was the last payment to him?
Actually, they hadn't received a payment in the last three months. And they contacted the village last week threatening to file legal action because he stopped paying.
Because?
Because, to my knowledge, uh, I guess POs were not being processed for their attorney during the transition of village managers. They submitted bills in May, in June, in July, and they had not received payment. Uh, when they attempted to send an email to a previous village manager, the email kicked over to me. I responded, and they said they hadn't been receiving any response. Um, and after looking into the records, that was a, one of the law firms that we would actually establish a payment plan with to prevent them from filing for a lawsuit due to lack of payment. And just for the record, this had, this specific bill has been on various bills payable for the last year and a half to two years, but in regards to the specific payment plan. So this is not a new vendor to the board.
Which one? Which one is not new vendor to the board?
The Hodges.
Any other? Yes. I, I just have a question. On the cover sheet, it has a grand total of two-eighty-two, two-twenty-two point twenty-six. Uh, there's a number for general fund account, road and bridge fund, capital project, and payroll fund. The total on the check registry report is two-seventy-nine, two-two-one point twenty-six. And the difference of the two is three thousand dollars. So where is the difference in the three thousand dollars lacking from the check registry report and the cover letter?
Look at the invoice approval list by five.
Okay.
It's on.
So what is it for? I don't have that. I didn't print it out because it's a whole lot of pages. I just print out the check register. Cause I figured whatever's on the check register will reflect those.
If we, if we made some checks that would add, but let me look through it and I will let you know what it is.
So what's the difference in three thousand? Yeah.
That was likely. I'm sorry, trustee Liz Williams is showing me a sheet of paper and, and her total on her page is saying three thousand, six-hundred-and-seven dollars and forty-one cents. The exact difference between the check registry report and what's on the cover letter is exactly three thousand dollars. So I'm about to see where the three thousand dollars is.
I don't know, it doesn't say.
And while she's looking for that, just for my, to, to break it down and help me understand, is there any way we can note on here, or is that in the check register? What's road and bridge? What's capital project? Cause I don't, you know, when I look over on the check register, I don't see a thirty-six, nine, or six. So I don't know that's capital.
Just write down, it's in the invoice approval list by five. So if you, if you look at this, um, invoice approval list by five, it's, it's broken out. What we charged for road and bridge, what we charged for payroll fund.
Okay, so what's the difference? I think, no, that's on the sheet. So let me, can, can you give me a little time to figure that out, what it is?
Trustee, the, the total on the last page that trustee, uh, Williams was referencing, the grand total is two-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars and twenty-six cents, which is the same number that is on the, the cover page, which is two-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars and twenty-six cents.
I, I understand that. She was showing me a, a check, uh, registered called payroll fund, and I'm looking for specifically three thousand dollars. The difference is three thousand dollars to even.
My, my point is, there is no difference between the check register, which was your main issue, and the cover sheet. The, the, um, the cover sheet says two-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars and twenty-six cents. And the grand total, uh, for the check register, last page, page six, or page eight, is two-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars and twenty-six cents.
No, no, that's not the check register. I'm talking about this check registry report that has a total payments of sixty, I believe that says, and it's two-seventy-nine, two-twenty-one. Twenty-six.
Well, these are generated checks from the other main, the manual check.
So that's what she's looking for, trustee. Thank you. Again, while she's looking for that, we have on this, um, agenda, bills payable to pay settling ponds. So if we agree to pay this, then will that negate settler's pond on the seven o'clock agenda? Just a question. Cause that's also, settler's pond is on the next committee of the whole meeting.
To answer your question, trustee, uh, no. If the committee of the whole meeting is just for discussion, our board action is not going to occur until the twenty-eighth. Even if the board approves this, just as we did with the treaties, the check will be held until final board action. We have to do the bills payable list to make sure that we have captured all the bills that are pending, that need to be paid. But as I guarantee with the treaties, and as I guarantee with this, until the board does proper action, there will be not a check released to sever its pond.
So since you brought that to my memory, while she's looking, did we pay the balance for the sheet, for the sheet, guys?
Yes, and the memo was, it was produced. I have no problem sending it to you tomorrow. I have to sue you, send everything to you. Cause I know you asked for that specifically. No problem.
Well, wrapping the whole up. Think you could maybe get that, or is it going to take a while, Ms. Taylor?
Um, can I request that I, um, take a look at what it is?
Okay.
Please, I'm sure it's a name which had a clue, first time into that word, but I would be able to, um, do a little research and get back to you if that okay.
How much time do we need to do this research? I'm sorry, ma'am. Is it something that you do while we're conducting the rest of the meeting, or the next meeting?
No, but I can have an answer for you tomorrow. You'll need to give that to me.
Okay. All right.
One other question. Are these, uh, any new bills pressing?
Sign in, anybody can sign in right now.
To answer your question, trustee, all the bills under our pressing, um, we specifically went through each purchase order and placed it on the bills payable list based on board. So yes, those are bills, uh, that are priority for critical operations of the village.
Yes, sir. I've got just one quick question for check one-on-one, eight-on-four. I'm assuming that there was some kind of accident, but this vehicle repairs for two-thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars and eighty cents, like for the United States Postal Service.
That is a motor vehicle accident, uh, that one of the police officers were involved in about a year and a half ago, um, in Monique. And that was the settlement that was decided upon with the United States Postal Service. So that is actually to pay for the damage that was done to the postal service vehicle.
That's correct. I suspect.
Yes.
Okay. I don't know if that's a typo, but for two attorneys, current attorney, this is September, October, should that be July and August?
No, that's correct.
It is correct, yes. Okay. All right, everyone agree that you've been waiting till tomorrow to get the answer? Okay. Roll call. Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Trustee Wilson.
Hold, no.
And trustee Brooks.
Hold, aye.
Trustee McMullin.
Hold, aye.
Trustee Payton.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
And Mayor Tull.
Aye.
Okay. I motion to adjourn the special meeting. So moved by trustee.
Second.
Trustee Brooks. And second by trustee. Sek Mollin. Roll call, please. Trustee Wilson. Trustee Wilson. Trustee Brooks.
Hold, aye.
Trustee McMullin.
Aye.
Trustee Payton.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
And Mayor Tull.
Hold, aye.
Okay. One of the time, of essence, I don't, uh, hold up for a second. Did everybody, that was our special meeting, did everyone that would like to sign in, sign in? Which side? The sheet is up here. The sheet is up here. Sign in. This is the next special meeting. Yeah, I just voted in. Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Give me a little cheer, I'll give you a cheer. You got one second, right? Yes. sorry, committee of the whole meeting, I'm happy you say, is called to order. Roll call, please. Trustee Williams.
Here.
Trustee Wilson.
Here.
Trustee Brooks.
Present.
Trustee McMullin.
Present.
Trustee Payton.
Here.
Trustee Brown.
Here.
And Mayor Tull. Here. Uh, because we did the pledge of allegiance earlier, you, we move to general, uh, go ask the attorney to make a statement.
Uh, for the general public comment, um, visitors are always welcome to all public comment meetings. The board trustees comment on an issue. Person wishing to speak will be called upon by the mayor during the sec, uh, the section, which is, uh, general public. The interest, the interested party will stand, identify themselves, and make their comment. In order to give proper consideration to all items on this agenda, the mayor will limit participants in a debate and will close off protracted, repetitive, irrelevant, or abusive remarks. And this is a comment forum, and if response is necessary, board members may like to respond formally at the next regular board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, I'd like to express that there's a thirty-minute limit total, so if we do not get to everyone, please know that it will be, you're being acknowledged, and acknowledged at the next meeting. Okay, um, general public, since we have one, two, three, four, five people here, hopefully you can hold to three minutes, but please, again, thirty-minute rule total for our comments. Ms. Taylor.
Good evening to the board, the residents.
Good evening.
Um, I'm just real, actually want to make two comments really, and I may have a question at the end, I don't know. But, um, actually, I just wanted to, um, first of all, give shout-outs to, um, the Aqua Committee. Aqua, uh, the whole process seems to be more rather smoothly for those who may not know, and I'm sure everybody knows they're in the flushing process right now. And, uh, just want the residents to know that the Aqua Committee was a part in making sure that information got out to them, um, in a timely manner. Um, Aqua Committee did meet with Melissa, who is our representative here at University Park, and we got together, put together questions, uh, for her to be able to answer. Uh, those questions came from the town hall meeting that the town hall committee, uh, held, and they also asked Aqua to come and speak at that time. We were able to put those, together those questions based on questions residents still had after that meeting. So residents were able to get some of those questions and answers to those questions in a mailer that was sent to them through their billing. We also wanted to make sure those residents got, um, Aqua Alerts out, and there was a form for water smart alerts, and it kind of looks like this, hopefully you can get that. Um, if they received that form, they were supposed to call in to register. Um, so hopefully they can look in their, um, bill and find that information. And if they don't have it, they can call one-eight-seven-seven-nine-eight-seven-two-seven-eight-two and speak with a customer service representative, because they want to make sure that as we're going through this process, we're getting water alerts. Also want you to know, the Aqua Committee also wanted Melissa to come out and give more workshops, understanding that the, um, community block club already had them to sponsor workshop. But just want you to know, the Aqua Committee is also in the process of making sure we have continued workshops. And I am in contact with Melissa, um, pretty regularly on that, and also I will be talking a couple more about that, trustee Wilson.
The, um, next thing I wanted to say was that I also attended the meeting of the minds, and I'll repeat that again, because I thought that title was, uh, quite appropriate, meeting of the minds. But I just, uh, wanted to say that I don't know whether the whole board knew about this meeting of the minds, but I want to tell you that I think that it was the most beneficial for everybody to be there if you did know about it. I know that trustee, uh, Williams was there, I know that trustee, uh, Oscar Brown was there. Uh, but if it's a meeting of the minds, we need all the chess pieces on the board to be there, because your minds are the minds that make the decisions. There were other minds there from the past, which was great, because we need that input. The person who was running that, facilitating was, I think he was a former mayor of party, I think the last name is Johnson, if I got it wrong, someone correct me. He was facilitating, talking about the nature of our problem, um, in University Park, and he was also supposed to be talking about the history, and he was also supposed to be going over resolution of solutions. We didn't get to the solution part, we didn't really talk too much about the nature and the history, uh, how we got there, because there were so many other things people needed to correct, including, there was also mention that this might be a political group, went back and forth about that. Certain people were there, past, uh, Mayor Al McCown was there, and he also said, he indicated that he didn't think it should be called a political group, for various reasons. David Savie was there, um, Al, I believe that's his name, he was there. Uh, yes, there were several people there who had some good input, however, again, if it's a meeting of the minds, if you didn't know about it, I'm telling you guys about it, because you need to be there, all minds need to be invited, we need to work collectively together to move this community forward. Thank you. Thank you.
Sure.
Um, it's on the Aqua Alert flyer that they sent out. Okay. Thank you, welcome.
Um, Ms. Mr. Taylor. We are, um, we are, go ahead.
Ms. Taylor, we sent out a, uh, just the board of trustees, uh, so that everyone would know, we did send a letter asking for the state to try to intervene with that forty-three percent. Uh, the process of what not were filed is so far along, it was even before, uh, the election. Uh, we don't believe that we have a chance, but it is a fighting chance. And if I'm not mistaken, trustee, I mean, uh, not yet, uh, Chief Payton, Chief Payton did send the letter once it got from the attorneys, um, asking for intervention about the forty-three percent. At, at minimal, we were asking, could it be in increments or something of the sort? So we can just pass them on at desk. We're trying to figure out a way to communicate. I already spoke with the mayor, uh, we were hoping that maybe the cable studio was up, so that you would be informed of the latest update. And did we have that chance to, at least, or the state would say, okay, forty-three percent was just too much to pound to the residents for University Park?
Okay. Ms. Taylor, what happened was, I, I'm sorry.
I did speak with, uh, manager about this situation, and I told him it was too high. I also talked with Aqua and let Aqua know that it was too high. I don't think that they should go up on our water bill with what they're trying to do now, cause we paid enough already. So that's why I wanted to see with the, uh, ICC to say, stop it. And at that time, uh, Phil Brooks, trustee Phil Brooks, came in with me, and we, you know, sent this paper off. So I just wanted to let you know.
Thank you. That's why I just wanted to say my last thing in response to that, my going back and forth. But that's why I think it's so important that the committee pushes forth and making Aqua accountable to the people here, um, and being able to come out, e- even if it was monthly, at this point, it was going through this process, being able to come out and being able to address the residents, because we're going to have more questions as this process moves forward. So thank you for all your efforts.
And Melissa did call me, and the next meeting will be in January. And I asked her was going to be an additional cost for the flushing to the residents, she said no. And the letters did, uh, were approved by the attorneys, and it did go to a judicial. Thank you. Next person, Mr. Griffin.
I'm sorry, I thought apparently a meeting was a break. I'd like to explain questions. I just want to know what's the update on IRH, um, that report? I'd like a copy of that report, uh, as soon as this, you know, as soon as it's available. And also, I'd like to know what's the disposition on, uh, direct energy? Again, I don't feel that trustee should, uh, pad their pockets with a residual income when the board vote on something that will enhance, uh, trustee's salary outside of what he's getting here. So I'd like to know the disposition of direct energy, and I'd like to know when will, um, the IRH, uh, report be, uh, become available. And I appreciate you for what you've done, you've done a good job, so thank you.
Um, I'm not clear on that, but I'm not going to address that right now, because I'm going to go into a debate. So, um, trustee.
Just to answer the question in regards to the report. Uh, once the monthly report has been released to the board, it will be provided to the clerk and if it available, be a full year request. Uh, as far as direct energy, unaware of that, there's no bill, we're not paying any bills to direct energy based on reviewing the bills payable since I've taken over as annual manager. So I wouldn't know what the disposition is on that. Um, and I think that answers your two questions correctly.
Thank you. Um, Prince Isaiah, Israel. Did I pronounce that correctly?
My name is Prince Isaiah. I'm an advisor to the World Conference of Mayors on the Jolly Fort. I was one of the ones that took small cities across America into the African arena, so that these talents like this could have a voice in the international arena. And when I had the opportunity to meet the mayor, and her capacity is representing the female mayors across this country, I asked her if I could come out and see what I could do to help further the village here, so that whatever resources in the national arena can be brought to this community to empower it. So I wanted to come out and just look at, listen to things that are concerning you. I found her to be an energizing, spirited person, and I met her at a conference, talking about the things that the city needed, and I wanted that her to know, and I kept my word to kind of see her, so that she could have the support that I could constantly bring to this community to help, so that we could help solve the problems that are affecting these small communities across America. So thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Prince.
Thank you.
Isaiah, I S, A S I D L. Man, why?
Aye.
I'm Israel.
Here. Next one's Pastor Staley.
Good evening, mayor and staff and, and board. Uh, my name is Pastor John Tatum. I bring you greetings from the building, Your Faith Worship Center. We are now, um, hosting and holding our services at, uh, the pilgrimage church right down the street. I wanted to welcome you all. Uh, we have services at twelve. I wanted to welcome you all. Uh, we have services at twelve noon every Saturday. And, uh, we're so glad to be back in the community that I grew up in as a little child. And I'm so glad to be here to roll our sleeves up, uh, to help and assist in any way we can. So again, thank you for listening to the tonight, and may God bless you all.
Uh, question. Do you have a Sunday service or only Saturday?
Only Saturday.
Saturday, twelve o'clock.
At twelve noon, and Wednesday Bible class at seven o'clock.
Sir, could you tell me, is this a Sunday or a business church?
No, ma'am, it's not.
Okay.
Not that I'm initial, thank you.
Okay.
Welcome back, pastor. Brought a lot to our community years ago. Welcome back. I, I'd like to acknowledge, um, historian Pastor Samson this time.
Want to say good evening to trustees and all the, uh, folk who are here. Um, my name is Reverend Dr. Al Sampson, and the only man that Martin Luther King Jr. ordained that was a part of his organization. And we worked with black farmers down south. Uh, I created a Department of Agriculture in my church on one hundred first and Wallace. And, uh, at Lincoln University, we have an M C bank, so for farmers paying a hundred dollars a bag of seeds, we give it to them for fifty dollars a bag. And we now have opened up, uh, base at, uh, Central State, um, College, because Africans in America have been real deep with the whole agricultural piece. And now what we're attempting to do is say that, under the leadership of this great mayor, because she's now a part of the World Conference of Mayors, and one of the past captains with Johnny Ford. Some of y'all remember Johnny Ford down in Tuskegee, Alabama, who founded the World Conference of Mayors. So I'm joining Brother Prince Asiel to, to say that, uh, we, we wanna come to help. And, uh, we are prepared to help you, because we, we help you, we help ourselves. There are farmers out of Arkansas, Mississippi, and Louisiana, who have been growing vegetables for our organization, which is called George Washington Carver Farms. And, uh, the value of that organization is plugged into a university down in Pine Bluff. Is anybody here from Arkansas? Okay, well, get ready for the crowded peas and the butter beans. They're on the way.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now, I'm not looking at this, but my question would be related to the budget, it's not, what are you gonna have?
I'm sorry.
I said my question earlier was related to the budget, and I know it's gonna have dialogue at that point and all, or not, because I didn't have a copy of the budget, so I couldn't address it, so that was my, I was shooting, so...
Cause there is a, there is one answer.